Okay. A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. First, join me in thanking the Soundwaves and their director, Ben Isenob. They did a great job, as they did last year. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I submit the following memorial resolution. Whereas the citizens of Manchester by the sea note with profound regret the deaths of several of their friends and neighbors during the past year, and seek to recognize and acknowledge their varied contributions to the town's commonwealth and welfare and our mutual sense of community, we citizens hereby salute the departed, acknowledge our common indebtedness to them, extend the sympathy of the town to their intimates and survivors, and declare that this resolution be entered into the town archives and a true copy be sent to the appropriate survivors. The persons memorialized and their achievements are proclaimed in the order of the dates of their deaths. Catherine V. Erickson, Housing Authority; June Nicholas, Zoning Board of Appeals; Cynthia A. Manos, Assistant Treasurer; Pamela Grady, Cultural Council, excuse me; Catherine Graham, School Librarian; George S. Scharf, School Building Committee; Mildred A. Nahatis, Council on Aging; and Ann Harrison, the Chair of the Select Board, moves the resolution as read, and John Round, the Vice Chair, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The memorial resolution is unanimously adopted. I ask that all who can rise and observe a moment of silence in memory of these former town citizens, and also of Planning Board Chair Ron Master Giacomo, who died recently after many years of service. Now we'll conduct elections to the town's ancient and honorary officers. First, I ask for nominations for Pound Keeper. Just call it out. I couldn't hear that.
Tom Keough.
Tom Keough. I think Tom has held just about every other office in town, so that's... All in favor of Tom Keough for Pound Keeper, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Tom is unanimously elected. Now nominations for two fence viewers.
Gar Morris.
Gar Morris.
Bruce Heisey.
I heard two names. Bruce Heisey. I declare the nomination is closed. All in favor of Gar Morris and Bruce Heisey for fence viewer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. And now nominations for two field drivers.
Sue Thorne.
Sue Thorne.
Kristi White.
Kristi White?
Yes.
And the nominations are closed. All in favor of Sue Thorne and Kristi White for field driver, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they're unanimously elected. Now nominations for two measurers of lumber.
Henry Ottinger.
Henry Ottinger. And Denny Hall. Nominations are closed. All in favor of Henry Ottinger and Denny Hall for measurers of lumber, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they're unanimously elected. And last, one measurer of wood and bark.
Jeff Parker.
Jeff Parker. All in favor of Jeff Parker for measurer of wooden bark, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And he's unanimously elected. And that concludes the election of our traditional officers. I'll briefly state our customary procedural points. There are several stationary microphones around the room. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat, wait to be recognized, and give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson. I ask that you stand when you speak, if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front, as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. The tellers also have portable mics for anyone who might have difficulty reaching the stationary ones. So if that's the case, please raise your hand, and we'll make sure that a microphone comes to you. We're using closed captioning for this meeting, for the first time. It will be displayed on the two large screens on either side, and I hope that voters will find it useful. Speakers must remember to direct their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. They must limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. I encourage voters who feel they may need more time for a complex subject to ask for it, but you can say a lot in two minutes. Abraham Lincoln delivered the Gettysburg Address in less. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting, but if the motion for the previous question, the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under the rules we follow, it's not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. And I'll accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept that motion from one who makes a statement on the merits and then immediately moves to close the door on contrary views. You should have picked up a blue card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. If the electronic voting system should fail, heaven forbid, and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure you're counted. Most matters require a majority vote. The motion for the previous question requires two-thirds, and certain other questions require two-thirds or in some cases, a greater proportion, and I'll explain those if they arise. Excuse me. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator, the heads of all town departments; Pamela Bodwin, Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District; Michelle Cresta, Director of Finance and Operations for the Regional School District; Michelle Randazzo, Town Council; and also Devon Braun and Roger Smirage with KP Law. And I should note that Roger is the Town Moderator in Wenham. Welcome. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if needed. Once we've established a quorum, as we now have, I'll assume a quorum continues to be present until it's challenged and found lacking by an actual count. The procedures we follow reflect provisions of the Massachusetts Acts and General Laws, Article 2 of the Town's General Bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time, and the traditions of the town. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight. The registrar of our voters, Gary Justo; and assisting Gary and Town Clerk Diane Buco; Allison Anhold-White; Michelle Behr; Jeff Bodmer Turner; Emma Brown; Muffin Dischel; Ellen Flatley; Christina Holtz; Tom Keough; Carolyn Kelly; Kurt Melden; Elaine Persons; Kathy Ryan; Judy Sabella; Joanne Shan; Lee Simmons; Elaine Taylor; Chris Thomas; Gretchen Wood, assisting me in timing speakers; and Tiffany Marletta, running the electronic voting system. Thank you all for serving the town. And I now recognize Ann Harrison, Chair of the Select Board.
I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight to do the business of the town. This is maybe a relic, but it is also the purest form of democracy, and I really am happy to see so many people here to function in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. The best way to follow the progress of the meeting is with the Annual Report of the Finance Committee. The pamphlet contains all the warrant articles and the recommendations of the Select Board and Finance Committee. They were mailed to every household, and there were extras at the check-in stations. There were also several handouts you should have received as you checked in. The first, prepared by the Town Administrator, contains the motions we'll be voting on under Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, and 15. And the second contains the Regional School Committee's three motions under Article 11 and also Committee's motion under Article 12. It's especially to have those two handouts because we'll be using them to vote. So if you don't have both, please raise your hand, and one of the tellers will give them to you. They're coming. Thank you, Muffin. There were also informational handouts from the Library Trustees on Article 9 and from the MBTA Task Force, the Friends of Manchester Trees, and the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends. And while we're voting, a box in the corner of the screen behind me will also show the 15-second voting period counting down. Press 1 to vote yes, 2 to vote no, or 3 to abstain on the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press another button. The computer records only your last choice. When the voting period ends, the screen will show the number of yes and no votes and abstentions, and will also display the totals graphically. You'll also be able to see the voting display on the portable screens around the room. If you need to leave early, please exit through the lobby where you checked in and return the handset, so we can keep an accurate tally of how many voters are still here. When the meeting ends, you can exit through any of the doors. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will turn green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstain. The device then goes back to sleep. The Town Clerk and her team checked the handsets thoroughly, replaced the batteries if needed, and tested them all, so it's very unlikely that they will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting, or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another. As you may remember, the electronic voting system failed at our meeting in the fall. I appointed a committee of technically savvy people to determine the cause and recommend measures to keep it from happening again. I want to thank Jim Starkey, who chaired the committee, and its other members, Lee Spence, Kurt Melden, and Bob Moffett, as well as Ann Harrison and Tiffany Marletta, who assisted in the investigation. We believe we've corrected the problem, and to make sure, we'll test the system periodically during this meeting. And we'll conduct two test votes now to make sure everyone is comfortable with the system. Question 1: Will the Celtics win the NBA Championship? 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. You may remember I asked that question last year, and it didn't turn out so well. Well, we're pretty optimistic this year. The outcome is 212 yes, 38 no, and 17 abstain. Second question, not quite so optimistically: Will the Red Sox finish last in the American League East again this year? Voting is open. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Well, again, we're optimistic. 85 said yes, 156 said no, and 36 abstained. Are there any questions about how to vote electronically? The voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. Any voter who wishes will be able to go to the Town Clerk's office and determine how his or her votes were recorded. The town will not create a record linking voters' names with individual handsets, so all votes are secret. That means that if you want to check your voting record with the Town Clerk, you'll need to save the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset following the words "device ID" next to the QR code. If you have a smartphone, just take a photo of the back of the clicker. If there are no questions, we'll go to Article 1. Article 1 concerns the reports of town boards and committees in the Annual Report, and Brian Solacey moves and Ann Harrison seconds the article as presented in the warrant. Is the meeting ready to vote? Voting is open. 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. 229 yes, 1 no, and 8 abstentions. Article 2 is to fix the 12-month salary of elected officers in the town, and Catherine Bellotta moves and Ann Harrison seconds the article as presented in the warrant. Is the meeting ready to vote? Voting is open. 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. 254 yes, 7 no, and 13 abstentions. The motion prevails. Article 3 is the appro... Thank you. Article 3 is the appropriation for the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District, and John Round moves and Brian Solacey seconds that the town raise and appropriate $243,385 and it be funded by taxation for the purpose of funding the town's share of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? Voting is o... pen. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. 281 in favor, 10 opposed, and 8 abstentions. The motion prevails. Article 4 contains the operating budget requests of town departments and committees and includes the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. The report also contains the Finance Committee's recommended source of funding for each item. The requests and recommendations are found at pages 22 through 26 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. And Ann Harrison moves and Sarah Melish seconds that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing 12 months, effective July 1, 2024, and appropriate the same, the amounts presented in the Expenses Budget Summary section under the Recommended and Funding Sources columns of the Finance Committee report, pages 25 and 26 under Article 4. Provided, however, that with prior approval of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator is authorized to transfer unexpended funds within a summary category, for example, within general government. The Select Board and the Finance Committee both recommend approval. And I recognize Sarah Melish for comments on behalf of the Finance Committee. And I told her that she can have more than two minutes on this article and also under Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. It's nice to see such a large crowd here tonight. The town is in great financial shape with excess levy capacity, excess reserves, including stabilization and fund balance, and water and sewer retained earnings. The Finance Committee has spent many hours working with the Select Board, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, and Department Heads to create the Fiscal Year 25 Budget. I thank everyone for your input and ideas. The Finance Committee feels the Fiscal Year 25 operating budget is fiscally prudent and addresses the needs of the town. Both the Police and Fire Departments have been working diligently to control overtime, although some will always be needed to ensure time for training and adequate shifts to address our public safety needs. Although the salary line increases appear high, the amount reflects increases for Fiscal Year 24 and 25 since the union contracts, except Police, were finalized after the 2023 Annual Town Meeting and funded last November as a single salary account and thus not reflected in each salary line. As explained on page 5 of the Annual Report, this budget includes some staffing changes, addition of a deputy harbor master for more coverage on the water, and to create a succession plan for the future retirement of the harbor master. Communication coordinator will become full-time to keep you informed. Addition of a land use clerk by consolidating multiple part-time positions to better coordinate between various land use boards and the building inspector. Clerk of Works in DPW to oversee large projects with a position expected to last about five years and is much more cost-effective than hiring outside consultants for each project. Election and registration is higher due to additional number of elections to be covered with early voter voting, absentee voting, and in-person voting. We still struggle to contain legal services and have a separate warrant article to add $100,000 for Fiscal Year 24, primarily due to the appeal of the SLV 40B project. This is a lean budget, which meets the town's needs, and will result in a tax increase of about 2%, including operating, routine capital, and the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Now I'll go through Article 4 by major budget category, such as general government, and read the total amount recommended for that category by the Finance Committee. If any voter wants to ask a question or change the Finance Committee's recommendation on any line item within that category, please call out "hold," and we'll stop and identify the item number. If any voter wishes to change the Finance Committee's recommended amount on any line item, we'll take those changes as amendments to the main motion and vote on each one separately. When we've finished all the holds, we'll then vote on the main motion as amended if there are any changes. Until we've finished all action on Article 4, reconsideration of an individual item will not require the two-thirds vote ordinarily applicable to reconsideration. General Government, items 1 through 29. Total recommended for general government is $5,641,916. Are there any holds under general government? Public Safety, items 30 through 46. Total recommended for public safety, $4,425,52. Any holds under public safety? Public Works, items 47 through 57. Total recommended for public works, $2,480,466. Are there any holds under public works? Other Environmental, items 58 to 62. Total recommended for other environmental, $68,337. Any holds under other environmental? Human Services, items 63 through 68. Total for human services, $446,527. Are there any holds under human services? Library, items 69 and 70. Total recommended for libraries, $553,737. Any holds on library? Recreation, items 71 to 80. Total recommended for recreation, $449,882. Any holds? Debt Service, item 81. Total recommended for debt service, $13,327. Does anybody want to hold debt service? And Enterprise Funds, items 82 through 86. Total recommended for enterprise funds, $1748,468. Any holds under enterprise funds? Total recommended for Article 4, $168,112. Is there any discussion of the main motion? Meeting ready to vote? Someone sees a hand. Yes.
Isabella Bates, 2 Masconomo Street. I'm sorry I didn't do it at the time, but I wonder if we could have an explanation in the Conservation Commission of how the salary is going from $69,000 to $15,000. What's happening there?
Mr. Fetterspiel, this is Town Administrator Greg Fetterspiel.
So let's see if I can juggle this with a broken elbow. Hopefully, I will be okay. I don't recommend doing it right before town meeting, but anyways. In terms of the Conservation Commission, what we have done is we are contracting the services for the conservation agent. And so instead of showing that expense as a salary, we are now showing it under expenses because we are contracting and sharing that position with Hamilton. So you can see that the salary line is significantly lower, but the expense line is significantly higher. So there's just a shifting of columns.
Thank you.
Any discussion of the main motion? Yes.
Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. The harbor master salary request to go up...
What line item are you looking at?
Line item 36. If we do not approve the article about Article 7, then will that salary go back down to what it is now?
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So the answer is no. The salary increase that you see in Article 4 is covering the additional position of a deputy. Article 7, which talks about the new launch, is 100% separate. So they're independent of each other.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Now, I hope we don't have any more holds, because I asked for them before. Ready for it to vote on the main motion? Yes. Voting is open. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. The vote is 301 in favor, 8 opposed, with 7 abstentions. Excuse me. Thank you. We have... We had 314 people checked in. That vote was 316, so we've gained a little bit, but it still appears to be working fine. Article 5 is the capital budget, and it's on pages 26 and 27 of the Finance Committee report. The motion is Ann Harrison moves and Sarah Melish seconds that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay for the items listed, and appropriate the same as presented in the Recommended and Funding Source columns of Article 5, as presented in the warrant with the following clarifications. Item 2 is $20,000 from taxation and $230,000 from fund balance. Items 9 and 10, we appropriate from the library restroom renovation project funded as part of the FY '23... of the FY '23 capital appropriation under Article V of the April 22, 2022 town meeting. Item 23, $350,000 from taxation and $200,000 from sewer enterprise funds. And there's also one correction. In line 14, it should read "police patrol vehicle replacement," not "police admin vehicle replacement." Now I'll recognize Sarah Melish, the Chair of the Finance Committee, for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee goal is to follow our capital plan and invest in our infrastructure. We have been concentrating on our basic infrastructure, and the time has arrived to start addressing some of our larger projects, which will require the issuance of a bond. The total fiscal year 25 recommended capital budget is $12.5 million, some in this warrant article and some in other warrant articles, so it's a little confusing. In 2023, the Finance Committee compared its reserves with those of other towns and determined a target of 8% rather than 10% would better accommodate our needs and that the stabilization fund should be about 25% of the total reserves. As in the past, this budget recommends using excess reserves to fund some capital items. Due to the size of the stabilization fund, it recommends using $500,000 from the stabilization fund under Article VI, the Mason's Building. The budget includes purchasing an ambulance, which, given the two-year delivery timeframe, is in line with the fire chief's seven-year replacement plan. The current ambulance will then become ambulance two. Due to the purchase of the ambulance and recent purchase of a ladder truck, we are not recommending a contribution to the fire apparatus replacement fund, but we intend to resume those contributions in the future in accordance with the fire chief's long-term apparatus replacement plan. Item 2, DPW sighting and geotechnical analysis, was recommended in the facility's master plan as the first piece of the puzzle in replacing and renovating town facilities for adequate space and climate resilience. A determination needs to be made whether the school street compost site is an appropriate location for the DPW facility or any other building. Item 19, water plant upgrades, PFA design, is lower than originally anticipated as it will be partially funded by a $960,000 federal grant and no longer requires a contracted clerk of works as that position is now in the operating budget. Items 20 and 21 are included in Article VIII rather than in this article. This article is funded by excess reserves, taxation, waterway fund, and water and sewer enterprise funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any holds under Article V? Yes, sir. Any other holds? Mr. Evans, do you have a question about 21?
Yes, Morgan Evans, 20 Boardman Ave. I'd like to understand more about the smart meters, especially this year with all the rain and as with most years, we don't have a problem with too little water. Why should we bond $1 million for smart meters when most smart meters work?
Ms. Melish.
Just to be clear, the smart meters in Article VIII, not this article, but the purpose of the smart meters is to install them at all houses, to enable people to have real-time data on their water usage, to enable increased conservation and knowledge of if they have water leaks. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
We have many needs for water improvements. It seems like this money would be better spent on our pipes, water and sewer, delivering those.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other holds under Article V? Meeting ready to vote? Is there another hand up? Oh, way in the back. Yes, sir. Could you go to the mic, please?
I was just, Joe Rindos, 23 Vine. I was just curious, how old are the existing meters that we have right now?
This is Chuck Dam, the Director of Public Works.
So the current meters were installed all over about 20 years ago, so we have about 2,400 meters throughout town, and over 2,000 of them are over the 20-year lifecycle.
Thank you, Chuck. Sir, if I could ask you to identify yourself, name and address, please. Thank you. Any other holds under Article V? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1, press 2 if you're opposed, and 3 if you want to abstain, and And the vote is 302 in favor, 21 opposed, with 12 abstentions, and the motion prevails. All right, we're going to have another test of the electronic voting system. I'd like to ask the four tellers to take their positions in the corners. Everybody else, keep your hand off your clicker. Tellers ready? Are you ready? I guess we get an F for following directions because we had many, many people test. But that's okay. At least it's working. Brian Solace moves and John Round seconds. The motion under Article VI in the Town Administrator's handout. This is an acquisition of a portion of the Mason Building for a senior center and other town purposes. And this is a two-thirds vote for two reasons. Under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 14, because of the appropriation to acquire real estate, and under Chapter 40, Section 5B, because $500,000 of the appropriation is coming from the stabilization fund, which also requires a two-thirds vote. Pursuant to Article IV, Section 8 of the general bylaw, no conveyance or acquisition of real property can be authorized by the town, by town meeting, unless it's been referred to the planning board and the planning board has read its report to the town. The planning board held a public meeting on this article on April 18th and recommended approval of this acquisition. Remarks?
Good evening. As many of you know, discussions about a permanent home at the Masonic Hall on Church Street for our community seniors has been, seniors, has been over a decade in the making. For a variety of different reasons, these talks never meant, never went much further than discussions. A year and a half ago, we approached the Masons again with a fresh perspective and a desire to work through the previous roadblocks. I will admit, we had a few stumbles along the way, both at the beginning and one as recently as two weeks ago. But with mutual desire to accomplish our goals, we have worked through these issues. I would be remiss not to mention the members of the Masons Building Committee, Russ Brown, Jim Brown, and Todd Crane. These gentlemen not only had to deal with negotiations with the town, but also their own membership. Also, Town Administrator Greg Fetterspiel provided invaluable counsel through the 18 months of discussion. Today, I stand before you with an agreement in hand, actually, this isn't it. Okay, before, an agreement in hand that brings this much-needed asset to the voters. The conceptual design and anticipated uses for the building are shown in the handout you received as you walked in the door. To summarize the elements of the win-win agreement between the town and the Masons, the highlights being the purchase of two-thirds of the building, $500,000 obviously from fund balance and 500 from taxation, create a new condominium association between the town and the Masons, fundraise up to $2.5 million for renovating and adding to the existing building within the next two, three, or two or three years. It is important to mention that we will be able to use the dining room and kitchen as needed during the fundraising process. I just, this is a great, we've come a long way, this is the first time we've got it this close, and now all we're looking for is town approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there discussion? No? Really? I see some hands over here.
Steve Hamilton, 51 Forest Street. And I'm just wondering if there was consideration, even I was down behind the police department today, in terms of high tides and flooding in that area.
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So we, as part of the vulnerability study of the village core area, the high tide areas were mapped and also projected, and this area actually is not in those areas that flood. It is a little higher. So the, obviously, the parking lot behind Town Hall is problematic, but the Mason Building sits up a good eight feet or more from that elevation. So the building itself is in pretty good shape. It's not ideal, but is in, is in pretty good shape. And obviously, down the road, we'll be needing to think of solutions for the parking lot itself, but the building is in a pretty good spot.
Thank you.
Great idea to have the senior center in the center of town. Just have a question regarding, has there been an appraisal on the building and appropriate pricing determined before we approve spending? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fetterspiel.
So yes, we did an appraisal a few years ago. I'm not going to recall the exact figures, in the $800,000 range as an appraised value, and properties have been appreciating in the 5% to 10% range over the last few years. So we do feel that the price is appropriate.
Thank you.
Is that, is that an appraisal for the portion or the entire building?
It was both, but that price that I quoted was for the three-quarters of the property.
And that's, that's what the appraisal was based on?
So the appraisal was done on the entire property, and then it was factored in that the town would be acquiring not the whole property, but roughly, roughly two-thirds, not three-quarters. I misspoke. It's two-thirds.
So I guess for clarity...
Ms. Rogers, you need to, you need to be recognized if you want to continue. Thank you.
Just, just want clarity that the entire building was appraised at 800 two years ago, and we're paying $1 million for two-thirds of it? I just want to get that clarified.
Right, so it was appraised four years ago at that price as a full, full property, and then the appraiser also gave us, I don't remember the figure that he gave, it was obviously a little lower than that for the portion only as a condominium. There wasn't a huge deduction because the main value is in the, is in that, is in the use that we would have for it.
Thank you. Further discussion? It's a little, Ms. Coleman, it's a little hard to hear you. Could you speak right into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you.
So I will repeat my name, Margaret Coleman, AKA Peggy Coleman, 23rd Street, and I speak as a resident advocate of senior services. I am the last surviving member of the original committee that formed a council on aging in Manchester, and that was 1986. So if you want to know more about how we got started serving the needs of the elderly, you can talk to me, but don't wait too long. I, I want to give credit to the original committee because there were no services for the seniors in 1987. And Frances Mellon Smith, who was a curator of the Concord Museum, was the first, was one of the members, and she came here because her daughter was living in town. And every time there was a need expressed for something for seniors, she would say, "Oh, we have that in Concord. Why can't we have it in Manchester?" And then there was Kathy Greenslet, the wife of the well-known doctor in town, and Ben Stasiak, who was a postal carrier, who by virtue of all of his delivery of mail, knew what the seniors needed in Manchester. And he wasn't looking to find out what, how soon they were not going to be around to buy their house, which was a common phenomenon in Manchester. And then there was Ginny Hughes. I don't know how many of you remember that Ginny Hughes was an incredible advocate for the town of Manchester. She lived to be 100 years old, and she moved away from town when, to be closer to her daughter. And then there was I, Peggy Coleman. So we started this council on aging, and it has grown to, and the reason we didn't have one, that's really important at that point, the 356 communities in Manchester, in the state of Massachusetts, only had a council on, didn't have a council on aging in six communities. One of them was Manchester, and the other ones were the Elizabeth Islands off of Martha Vineyard in Nantucket, so...
Peggy, Peggy, excuse me, this is a wonderful bit of history, and you're entertaining us beautifully.
I'm sorry, I don't hear you very...
You're a little over two minutes now, so I'd ask you to finish up.
Oh, time is up? Okay. But I'm just supporting this effort, so don't take any more time to get it established in its home of its own, and we won't be a snail. We feel like snails occupying everybody else's space. The community center, the congregational church, give us our own space.
Is there further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Gates.
Okay. Despite this terrible mess in court of the Harbor Point condo dispute with the community center, that building's existence would serve the needs, if slightly modified, if we have pursued that. I would think that they would be amenable to a lot less money, and that the building exists and could be in service much sooner with a modest amount of rehabilitation. And I just wonder if any further discussion has been had between the town council on aging, the Harbor Point people, and the community center people.
Well, I'm going to allow Mr. Fetterspiel to answer that, but I don't want us to get off on a tangent over the community center. So that'll be the last question we'll take on this subject.
I'll be brief.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, um, the town remains interested in potential uses of, of that building, um, we await the, um, the conclusion of the process between the private individuals that are currently involved, trying to figure out the, the future. We did look at it for a senior center, it really is just too small. Um, the space at the, at the, um, at the Masons is much, much larger, and the ability to expand, uh, much more significant, so it really does present a better opportunity for the seniors, but, um, there are potential uses for the other building as well.
Thank you. Mr. Spence.
Uh, Lee Spence, 63 Pleasant Street. Do we have an estimate on what this is going to add to the operating costs, assuming this is successful?
Mr. Fetischfield.
So, in terms of operating cost, we're probably in the 40 to $50,000 range annually.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Doan.
Carl Doan, 52 Summer Street. I move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. Is that seconded? It's seconded, that's the motion to cut off debate. If you're in favor of that, it's a two-thirds vote, please press, uh...
Do you want me to do a slide?
Yeah, yes. Actually, let's, let's see if we can do this by show of hands. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with the card in it, and if you're opposed. I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds, so we'll now, we'll go now to a vote on the main motion. If you're in favor, press one, opposed, two, abstain, press three, and voting is open. The vote is 326 in the affirmative, 28 opposed, with two abstentions, and the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. Article seven pertains to a potential launch service, and Kathy Bellata moves, and Ann Harrison seconds the motion under article seven in the town administrator's handout. Remarks?
Hello, everyone. The proposed launch service is, uh, the town's attempt to take over an existing service, not takeover, I should say, we are being offered the current launch service, um, from Manchester mooring, um, they are no longer going to provide a launch service for the mooring customers in the harbor, and so they asked the town if we would take over the service. So, we've spent a lot of time with the finance committee and with the harbor master to try and come up with a business plan that would allow the launch service to be completely funded by user fees, so no tax dollars would be, um, would be involved. Um, so what we're requesting tonight, however, in order to get the launch service started for this boating season, we're looking to get your approval on article seven, so that we could, um, have $9,500 transferred from the town's fund balance to cover the May and June expenses, um, where it would also include $125,000 to be transferred from the town's fund balance to actually purchase the boats from the existing service provider, and also appropriate $41,000 for next year's operating expenses, the, the operating expenses starting in July. However, all of these costs mentioned in the article are going to be reimbursed by the user fees collected. So, how do we do this? Well, we have given our harbor master a deadline to collect the upfront user fees of $575 per, um, customer by May 6th at noon, so we are looking for 70 launch customers by noon on May 6th. So, if you approve this article tonight, there's still another step that has to happen. We need those customers to give us the upfront fees by noon on May 6th, and then on the evening of May 6th, at the select board meeting, the select board will review the, the, uh, financials and make sure we're all set to go. So, the, this entire endeavor is desired to be funded completely by user fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellata. And I recognize Sarah Melish for the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After many discussions, the finance committee supports this warned article for a town-operated harbor launch service, based on the understanding it will be self-sustaining and no taxes or other harbor funds will be used to support it. We asked, we've asked the town accountant to separately account for the revenue and expenses for this service, so we have the data to shut it down if it is not self-sustaining. Peter Twining from the finance committee and Kathy Bellata from the select board worked with Bayon Pike, the harbor master, to craft a business plan, which includes covering the costs of the boats to be amortized over not more than 15 years, and building a reserve fund for future capital expenditures. We support the viability of the business plan and feel it is a low risk to be self-sustaining since annual fees will be collected prior to the start of a season, and it can be discontinued if there is not enough support. The harbor master, as Kathy mentioned, was tasked to obtain commitments from at least 70 people. He was successful, obtaining commitments from 80 people for a total of $46,000, which exceeds the projected first-year expense of the service. So, if you want to use the launch and not use a dinghy, please contact the harbor master, and he will gladly take your money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there discussion?
Have the boats been inspected and appraised?
Is Bayon Pike here? Bayon. This is Bayon Pike, the harbor master.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I do want to thank, um, Kathy Bellata and Peter Twining for their immense effort in, uh, moving this forward. So, uh, one of the launches is, uh, brand-new as of 2020. I spoke with the company that built it up in Maine, Atlantic Boatworks. Uh, this vessel, uh, the asking price, uh, that Manchester Marine has put before the town is far less than the value of the one newest launch. The second launch, uh, is, the hull is older, but it has a new engine, two years old, new transmission, uh, new steering, and has been completely rewired. I spoke with the company that built the big launch, uh, they said that both vessels are, um, good for service for 25 years. So, uh, the value of $125,000 is easily $75,000 less than the value given to me by Atlantic Boatworks in Maine.
The other part of the question was, have they been inspected?
Uh, so, they're still under their, uh, inspection, good for a couple more months. We can't have an inspection done until we own them, so as soon as, if this passes tonight, one of my next tasks is to reach out to the Coast Guard and schedule an inspection and to get the boats, uh, documented in the town's name.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Further discussion? Yes. I see a hand up, but I can't see the person because he's behind the equipment.
Hi, it's Anita Brewer, Stillie Home, 6 Pulaski Drive. I'm in favor of this, but I have a question. If you're not a, um, season pass holder, will you be able to use it on a one, you know, occasional basis?
Mr. Pike.
Um, let me take that if, if I may, Ellen.
Certainly.
Um, so, there has been discussion about expanding the service to allow, uh, perhaps for a harbor tour or an occasional user to pay a, a per-use fee, for example. However, we want to make sure that this service gets off on the right foot, and we want to make sure we understand the financials and how much it's going to cost, so we're taking one step this year, um, so it will serve the, the mooring, um, customers, and then if we, you know, as we learn more, we, we do anticipate possibly expanding the service, all to be, you know, covered by user fees.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Jim Starkey, 13 Tuck Point Road. I am a little bit confused about the current state of the collection for subscribers. Um, Ms. Bellata said that we needed to have 70 by May 6th, I believe, and Ms. Melish suggested that we already had well over that. How many checks do we actually have in hand on this date?
So, I'll let, I'll let the harbor master answer the specifics, however, it's my understanding that all of the people who have committed the 80, not all of them have paid because they wanted to wait for the vote of town meeting, so we were a bit of a, we have a chicken and egg issue here, a little bit of a catch-22, but I'll let Bayon answer as to the specific number of people who have already paid upfront.
Mr. Pike.
Uh, we have 20 of these, uh, 80 families who are interested in the launch service who've already paid, um, just wanting to, uh, make sure that they show support for the service, but I have had many, many folks say to me, "We would like to pay you today, but you don't own it yet. When you own it, we will pay." So, my job, uh, through May 6th will be to come and knock on your door, if you're one of those people, and collect, uh, that money.
Mr. Starkey.
Yes, um, I understand that, and I certainly hope you get your 70 people signed up. However, the motion is not conditional on that. The motion suggests that this will go through even if you don't meet that standard. Should there not be amendment? I would like to amend this motion to say that it is contingent on buying, uh, Bayon, our harbor master, sorry, uh, have checks in hand, uh, to the amount of $70,000, um, on May 6th. Is that correct?
70 customers?
70 customers, checks from 70 subscribers by May 6th at noon, so that has to be part of the amendment. Thank you.
And is that seconded? Yes. So, town, town council has advised us that we can't make the appropriation conditional, it has to be unconditional. However, we can make the expenditure of the funds conditional. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Starkey?
I'll take your word for it, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Starkey's motion or amendment then would be to make the expenditure, not the appropriation, of these funds conditional on having 70 paid customers by noon on May And that was seconded. Further discussion? Mr. Fetischfield.
So, just a comment about, um, making it self-sustaining. When, when, uh, Ms. Bellata and Mr. Twining worked with Bayon in the business plan, they did talk about, um, a three-year period of getting to full financial, um, solvency. So, they did talk about a 10, you know, within 10% of that, um, within the first three years, so it did, it did provide for a startup period. Um, I, I, we're pretty confident that it, it's going to go through, but, you know, if, if we had 65 paid, and, um, and that was the difference, I would hate to see this not go forward, because I think in a year or two, we'll be well over the 80 mark. So, I just, I just make that caution about making a hard, fast number in this first year.
Thank you, Mr. Fetischfield. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Lorraine Ayavani, 28 Pine Street. I know that Bayon is always very, very busy, so the business plan, does it address the number of municipal hours to oversee, um, this additional function? Thank you.
Mr. Pike.
Yes, it does.
Further discussion? Ms. Foley.
Uh, Mary Foley, 1 Pulaski Drive. So, what happens if there's years that you don't have the 70 payers? Who makes up that difference? And then, if after the three years, it, it's not taking off, and the town needs to sell the boats, and if there's a loss, who's making up the difference?
Ms. Bellata?
So, in...
Would you stand, please?
In the business plan that we posted on the website, it does say that if we do not collect enough upfront fees from, uh, paying customers in advance of the season, we will not run the launch for that season, so that's in the business plan. In addition, as Greg mentioned, we're allowing for a, um, a 10% profit shortfall or loss over a three-year period. However, if the service experiences such a loss over a three-year period, the service will be discontinued and the launch boats will be sold. Now, the reason we're pretty comfortable, um, about, you know, if we had, you know, God forbid, another pandemic, and you don't do any, you know, boating one year or whatever, the reason we feel comfortable we could sell the boats is because of, uh, the great deal we are getting. As Bayon indicated, the appraised value of the vessels is significantly higher, um, than what we are paying, so we feel very comfortable with, uh, the purchase price of the boats and the ability to sell them.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, in the back.
Isabella Bates, 2 Masconimo Street. Is there an upward number of subscribers? We know a lower number. Is there an upper number? I mean, we're already implying 80. How many?
Ms. Bellata? Bayon.
Right, so, uh, in the harbor, we have, um, approximately 340 mooring holders who have, uh, no affiliation with any launch service, so we have them to draw on, we're not going to draw on them all because of where they're located. We're also working towards, uh, with the Army Corps, being able to install more moorings out near Area 7 where we have, uh, capacity for, for mooring, so I would envision, uh, 100 customers would be fairly easily attainable.
I just can remember waiting long periods for the launch in my youth.
Was that at the yacht club?
Yeah.
Yeah. We definitely aren't at the yacht club.
No, but I was waiting.
Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? Then we'll vote on Mr. Starkey's amendment, which is to make the expenditure of the funds under this article contingent on 70 paid customers by May 6th at noon. That's the expenditure, which is conditioned, not the appropriation. If you're in favor of that, press one, opposed, press two, and if you abstain, press three, and the voting period is open. The vote is 187 in favor, 136 opposed, and 12 abstentions, so the amendment prevails, and we'll now vote on the main motion as amended. If you're in favor of the motion as amended, press one, opposed, press two, and abstain, press three. Voting is open. The motion is approved, 309 to 34 no, with six abstentions. Article 8 concerns issuance of debt for various capital expenditures. And John Round moves, and Ann Harrison seconds the motion stated under Article 8 in the Town Administrator's Handout. I want to explain what we're doing here. The usual process to authorize debt at town meeting takes a 2/3 vote. But because this borrowing exceeds $1 million, our general bylaw requires that we follow the provisions of a special act of the legislature applicable only to Manchester. The special act provides that it takes a majority vote at town meeting to place the borrowing on the ballot at the town election. And by statute, it will require a 2/3 vote at the election to approve issuance of the debt. An exclusion of the debt, which is also included in the motion, will be a separate ballot question, and that will require a simple majority under Proposition 2 and 1/2. Remarks? John Round.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening to you all. Much of the infrastructure that we rely on today, from pipes to roads to buildings, was built and paid for by previous generations. Over the last 10 years or so, we have made a concerted effort to reinvest in that infrastructure by allocating $3 to $4 million each year in it. Much of that money was raised by redirecting retired debt. There was no borrowing. But many of these important infrastructure elements have gone past their normal useful life, and the time for major reinvestment is upon us. And $3 to $4 million a year is insufficient to take on these larger projects. And so Article 8 seeks our approval of $7.55 million in new borrowing to pay for major upgrades to our water and wastewater systems. Our water system requires $4.1 million of that. To be kind with other, to be combined with other funds, to install new smart meters that will provide real-time consumption data, to reline more water mains, and I believe that Pleasant Street and its accompanying side roads are targeted for this summer, to upgrade water plant equipment, and to advance the design work and piloting of a PFAS filtration system, which now will be required for a recently announced EPA drinking water standard, which further restricts PFAS levels in our drinking water. Last month, as was mentioned earlier, we received a grant of almost $1 million, thanks to Representative Moulton, to look at PFAS treatment technology. It'll reduce how much we will need to borrow by that amount. Our wastewater treatment, our wastewater system requires $3.45 million, also to be combined with other funds, for major equipment replacements, flood mitigation, and processing improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Includes eliminating the need for using drinking water at the plant. And the plant is currently the largest user of drinking water in our town. The cost to each homeowner for the town to borrow this $7.55 million will be about $300 per year for the average home. Funds will be collected through a combination of water and sewer user fees and general taxation, and most likely, that initiative will begin in 2027. And the debt is expected to be retired in about 12 years. We recommend your approval of Article 8.
Thank you, John. Remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee supports Article 8 for water and sewer capital upgrades and to issue up to $7.55 million bond to cover the expenses. The upgrades include water pipe replacement, for which the costs have escalated significantly, replacing all water meters with smart meters to give residents real-time usage information to help with leak detection and conservation, and upgrades to the sewage treatment plant for climate resiliency and to recycle water, as John Round said, decreasing the use of potable town water. For the last few years, we have been using cash exclusions, which increase, which increase the tax rate for only one year, rather than issuing debt. However, we now have large projects we need to address for which the town is best served by issuing debt. The debt must be approved by the town in order to put the projects out to bid. Bond anticipation notes with interest-only payments are used during the projects, and long-term debt with interest and principal payments is not issued until after the projects are complete. Hence, will not impact the fiscal year '25 tax rate. A $7.55 million bond increases the tax rate about 2.5% for the duration of the bond, depending on the term. However, we expect a substantial portion of the debt service will be paid from water and sewer fees, rather than through an increase in the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there a discussion?
Hi, I'm Christina Giebus, 2 Raymond Street. Actually, just bought the house last month, so thank you for welcoming me. My question is, I understand a large percentage of the homes in Manchester rely on private septic systems. What percentage of the homes in Manchester rely on the wastewater system?
Chuck Dam, Director of Public Works.
All right, thank you. So it's actually the other way. About 2/3 of the town is on the sewer system, and about 1/3 is on private septic.
Okay. And so that 1/3 that's on private septic, they would also be subject to an increase in their overall property tax rate, correct?
Depending on where the funding comes from, it would be on taxation. However, you only get a sewer bill if you are on the sewer system. So whatever is done through fees would only be to the people using the service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Further discussion?
Chuck Furlong, 19 Ocean Street. Just like to get a little clarity on where this expense is going to be covered. On page 6 of the FinCom handout, it says that town expenses will increase 7.16%. There's no cost attached to Article 8, and I hear 2.5% increase in the tax rate. So I'm curious, is that in the 7.16%? Or will the costs of this article be additive to it?
Ms. Melish?
May I call a friend?
Yes. Mr. Fettishfield. Oh. Do you want to answer this? Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. The 7...
Andrea, would you give us your name, please?
Sorry, Andrea Mainville, Town Accountant. On page 6, the percentage she was referring to, the 7.16, that does not include the debts or the debt-related items. It's just for the operating.
Thank you. Just expand on that. Yeah, Mr. Fettishfield.
So just to expand a little bit. So the town operating budget is increasing that 7-plus percent. However, it's being paid for by a tax increase of 2% because we're using other funds or shifting dollars or tapping other revenue sources. For example, we have been very conservative in our estimated receipts for years, or being less conservative in those estimated receipts. And so the bond eventually would add another roughly 2 percentage points on your tax, tax bill, but that'll happen in a couple of years. And if you approve, this is going a little bit further, but before you this evening will be a one-year capital exclusion vote. So that may increase your, your tax bill another 2%, but that goes away, and then this would kick in and cover and be paid for by that same 2 percentage point increase.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield.
That'd confuse things more, perhaps.
Maybe. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Bates.
2, Isabella Bates, 2 Masconimo. Follow-up about the septic users and the sewer users. Is there any plans to have the septic users join the sewer? We have to incur our own individual private expenses to run our septic systems, on top of whatever additional taxation would be there. I know we don't get sewer fees in our water bill, but still, I wonder if there's any plan to include more sewer hookups in the town.
Mr. Fettishfield.
Yeah, Chuck can also chime in here. But in, in general, we have what's called a comprehensive waste management plan, CWMP, and that identified a few sections of town where we may need to be extending sewer service, depending on how well those septic systems are functioning. So obviously, if there are major failures, we would be motivated to extend. And if the owners are interested in, in helping pay for that extension, then we can do a betterment for that area. The general policy that the board has, the Select Board has, with their sewer commissioner hats on, is that 25% of sewer bonds are paid for out of general taxation, and 75% is paid out of user fees, just the sewer users are paying. There is a general benefit to the town for sewage, but, but the policy reflects some of that, but the majority, as I say, 75% is my policy, to be paid for out of the, out of the user fee base.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Foley.
Mary Foley, 1 Pulaski Drive. Just two points of clarity, please. You mentioned some of this is for PFAS. Could you say what the total PFAS cost will be over the next three, four, five years, so we can kind of gauge how much more will be bonded? And then I know there was discussion at Select Board meetings that the smart meters would go as a tax on the meter bill. Is that taken off, and now it'll be paid just through this Article 8? Thank you.
Mr. Dam.
Yep. I'll do the second question first. The, the meters, we have talked to both the Select Board and the FinCom about establishing a fee on water bills going forward, and so it's expected that we will institute the fee, but it's unclear right now until we get that approved by the Select Board, if it'll be all of that or some other portion for the, for the meter fee itself. In terms of PFAS, we have done preliminary engineering on both the Lincoln Street well across the street, as well as up at Gravely Pond, which is our, 60% of our source is the Gravely Pond, 40% roughly at Lincoln Street. They will require different levels of treatment and different items. All that information will be on the town's PFAS website, so you can look at that. But in general, the expected construction costs could be up to around $25 million. So this is just the, continuing the design and engineering that will be required to implement those changes. Now that, as was mentioned before, the EPA has established the lower MCL, the maximum contaminant limit, we expect that there will be more grant and SRF funding available that we will certainly try to go at before we come back to town meeting. However, those numbers are not determined for any sort of percentages or upper limit, so it's yet to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Dam. Further discussion? Mr. Evans.
Yes, Mr. Evans, Morgan Evans, 20 Boardman Ave. So if I have it correct, 1.5 million of the 7.5 million is just for the meters. There's 2,600 meters in town. Can I get that answered? Roughly? So there's $500 per meter cost? Can I get that answered?
Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a few different elements to the cost in doing a complete meter program. There's the meter itself, but there's also the MXU and then the software to read it. So all those different costs are factored into the 1.5 million. So in general, you know, those numbers are relatively close. However, we will need to put this out to competitive bid, so we'll get to evaluate bids, and the pricing can be more or less, depending on what the market is at that time.
So I'm interested in the return on investment. So most homeowners don't pay $500 a year in waters, I understand it. So what is the real savings and how are you thinking about it?
Mr. Dam.
So it's, it's not so much necessarily a monetary thing. You know, the meters don't necessarily pay for themselves, but our operating budget and our capital is more than $1 million, and we're talking about $1,500,000. So, you know, you're not paying it back in a year or anything like that. It's over the life of the bond. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but the other thing is, we are required to have meters, and meters under-reed as they age. And so, like I said, most of the meters in town are beyond that useful life. So just like our wastewater plan or water upgrades, you know, as things get older, they have to be replaced. And so we're kind of at that moment now. There was also a water task force that convened over the past couple of years, and their final report thought that recommending the smart meter technology would benefit the town so that they can, as was stated before, monitor their water use, and if they elect to conserve more, to save on their bill or vice, or just to be good stewards of the environment, that that would be something that they would be interested in. And so this would go along those lines.
Do you have further questions, Mr. Evans?
Yes. Since the 1.5 million is over two motions, maybe you can help me. If I wanted to strike the, the meters, the 1.5 million, would I reduce this to 6.050? Is that the appropriate procedure, Mr. Moderator? Okay. I motion to change Article 8 to 6.050 million, striking out the water meter, 1.5 million from the previous article.
Let's make sure we have the numbers right here. What is the amount attributable to the meters?
1.5. If you subtract that from the 7.55, you have the 6.05.
So your amendment would be to reduce $7,550,000 to $6,500,000? 50,000?
$6,550,000.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Further discussion?
Jim Starkey, 13 Tux Point Road. I presume that the water meter system has some licensed software, and if so, what is the annual cost? And what bounds are there on what they can do to raise the licensing fees in the future? Do we know what it's going to cost in 10 years, for example? I'm in the software business, and I'm kind of used to this sort of stuff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dam.
Yeah, so right now, we are on a drive-by system, so that has a software element to it as well, and we have support for, you know, taking that information and putting it into the, you know, quarterly billing. So as part of that, I believe we're around $7,000. Andrea might correct me, but give or take, it's not, it's not an exorbitant amount, you know, for what, for what that would be. The fixed network system, if we go to that, will be determined through the RFP process. I would anticipate that it would be between 10 and 20, so it would be increasing that, you know, what we pay today. But it's for a fixed network system, which doesn't require us to drive around to get the meeting, meter readings. It comes in over cellular or some other data collection system for the, for the readings. And so that's why, you know, you, you would be getting an app on your phone or a login online where you could go in and get real-time information, rather than a quarterly bill. So that's the benefit to the end user.
Thank you, Mr. Dam. Thank you, Mr. Dam. Mr. Starkey.
Yes, Mr. Starkey, 13 Tux Point Road. What concerns me is that once we've put in the infrastructure of buying the meters and wiring and installing them, if they raise the licensing price, licensing fee, they can hold it up to extortionate levels. If they say it's going to be $20,000 or $50,000, we'll have to write off the system or pay it. And I think we're just getting ourselves into it. And I think we're just getting ourselves into a big problem unless we have some agreement with them that caps what they can charge over the lifetime of the system. Thank you.
Mr. Dan.
Yep. So like I said, this will be a competitive RFP process where we will have many manufacturers competing to submit their best proposal. And so that is certainly an element that we can evaluate during the proposal process and decide whether or not it meets the town's requirements, and if it doesn't, then we can forego it.
Yes, thank you. Donna Furz, 8 Blossom Lane. Just following off of Ms. Foley's comment, if this were to go through, I'm trying to understand, why would we be charged money every quarter for the usage of this smart meter? That concerns me just a little bit to be added on to our bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furz. Yes, Ms. Tenney.
On this? Laura Tenney, 86 Pine Street. Thank you. I just want to speak in support of the smart meters program. I think it's very important, given the, you know, we're talking about $25 million in future capital expenditures in our wells and having current technology that can really give us more detailed and actual metering information and also allow us as residents in the town to look at how we become conservation-minded about water. Many of us are already, but I think having the data helps us be more informed water users and we can expect more drought and more pressure on our water systems in future years. And so I think this will be both good information, you know, in the current scenario and then help us plan for future capital expenditures and where we really want to put the town's money. So $500,000 or $1 million seems like a small expenditure, given the larger $25 million in capital expenses going forward. So I think it's, having the right data and the right contemporary tools will benefit us as water conservation is going to be, and water use is going to be an important issue for the town going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tenney. Mr. Bowling.
Eli Bowling, 99 Pleasant Street. I'm also going to speak in favor of the water meters. Another benefit of those, besides my appreciating the idea that the town continue doing actual maintenance of its infrastructure, replacing 20-year-old water meters seems to be a good plan along those lines. But additionally, there was a benefit of the smart meters that I think was discussed some years ago, which wasn't repeated tonight, and that is if you get real-time data, you can also be texted if your water usage suddenly spikes. And so that can be catastrophic if you have a significant leak, or it can be really relatively minor. I'm like, I'll bet there's a number of you who've had a leaky toilet, didn't even notice it, but you paid significantly on your bill because you had to pay the sewer for that before you actually caught the leaky toilet. Smart meters lets you, would let you catch that as soon as it happened, fix the toilet and not have to pay through the nose for the water that leaked out your toilet and went down the sewer. So I'm in favor of doing this. I think it's a good advance. I think we should vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Epps.
Caitlin Epps, 26 Proctor Street. I also want to speak just in favor of these because I was a pilot user after receiving a $3,000 water bill in one quarter because I had a leak, and if I'd had this, I would have known that that was happening and I would have seen the absurd usage going out. Once I did have it, I now follow it. When I'm away, I make sure they're gray and that there's no leaks, and so I do think that you'll see amazing value when you actually install them.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. Yes, in the back.
I just, I'm following up on Donna's question. Is the fee an ongoing usage fee or is it just until the costs of the meters are paid for?
Mr. Dan.
So we've discussed this with the select board, and we have, to my knowledge, we have not made a final decision on that. There's been talk of there just being a fee that is established by the size of your meter. So larger meters cost more, but also, you know, is indicative of more use, and so therefore it seems like a fair way of assessing a fee if you needed to do so to pay for bonds. So it could be, in addition to the meters, it could be for the PFAS numbers that we're talking about. However, that's not been determined, and so that would be up to the select board at a future date and a future meeting. And then there's also the idea that it could be done to just pay to offset the cost of the meters, so therefore it would not be part of your tax increase in the future when the bond and the work is done. It would just be part of your user fee until that is paid off. So if we're talking 1.5 million and we assess some nominal fee on your quarterly bill, it might be paid off in a couple of years, so that 1.5 million would be paid off sooner rather than later. But that has not really been determined at this point. Right now, we're just trying to get the project to the point where we can make those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Further discussion? Yes.
I'm Johanna Keef of 8 Victoria Road, and I would like to raise the concern, health concerns, of smart meters. I currently opt out of a smart meter, and I plan on opting out in any case. There's a plethora of data. There's, excuse me, there's easily accessed data online if you're interested in the radio frequencies emitted by smart meters. They're the same as your cell phone. They penetrate the body in neighborhoods in your home. If you live in an apartment building, you really can't escape it. I choose to escape it, and I just thought I would raise this concern. Most smart meters are designed to emit radio frequency radiation. It's a concern because it's a biologically active electromagnetic exposure that is absorbed into our bodies. Many smart meter systems generate RFR to wirelessly communicate with other smart meters and to the utility provider of each of these wireless communication networks, which increase the overall density of man-made pulsed RFR radiation outdoors and indoors throughout a neighborhood. This is not new. I find it interesting that no one has brought this up. It's all about the money, and we have to start thinking about our health. Do you want a cell tower right next to your house? I don't think so. This is a similar concern. So I suspect this isn't going to change most people's minds, but I hope you'll do your own research and opt out.
Thank you, Ms. Keef. Mr. White.
I'm Nick White of 9 Spiral Hill, and forgive me for doing this, but I have a doctorate degree in physics, and I have looked at radiation and been a radiation worker for many years, and I just want to rebut that completely. The radio frequencies which we use for our cell phones are not ones which cause cancers. If you have extremely high powers of those, if you stick your head in front of the cell tower on a ladder, you may damage your retina and you may do a couple of other bits of minor damage, but it is not the health hazard that a few organizations have tried to claim that it is. The radiation that comes from cell phones and things holding it against your head is way too little to do any biologically active effect.
Thank you, Mr. White. Further discussion? Mr. Keough.
Tom Keough, 20 Lincoln Street. The installation of smart meters was a recommendation that came from the Water Resource Protection Task Force, which met for about 18 to 20 months. We found that this was important because, one, it provides faster leak detection. One, you can have your meter hitched up to your cell phone or your watch and find out if you are having excess water usage. Two, water meters, when they get older, under-report water. They slow down. So in this case, everybody in town would get a new meter and get correct readings on their water usage. I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Yes.
Did you recognize me, Alan?
I did.
Jeff Podmer Turner, 89 School Street. I call a question.
That's the motion to cut off debate. Is that seconded? Seconded. All right, I'm going to do this first by hand and see if we can avoid having to make up a slide. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your hand with the blue card in it. Thank you. And if you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. So we'll vote first on Mr. Evans's amendment, which is to reduce the total amount of the appropriation by seven, from $7,550,000 to $6,500,000. And although you didn't say that, Mr. Evans, that also means reducing in I, $4 million, excuse me, $4,100,000 to $2,600,000 to pay the cost of capital improvements to the town's water system. Do you accept that? Yes. Thank you. All right, so we're going to vote on that amendment first. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor of Mr. Evans's amendment, press one. Opposed, press two. And abstaining, press three, and voting is open. And the yes vote is 83, no is 231, excuse me, 87. No, 231, and abstentions are 12. Mr. Evans's amendment does not prevail. And we'll vote now on the main motion, which is the original motion that Mr. Round made to appropriate $7,550,000 for the cost as stated in the motion. If you're in favor of that, press one. Opposed, two. Abstained, press three, and voting is open. And the result is 290 in favor, 33 opposed, and 10 abstentions. The motion prevails by a majority. Article IX pertains to the library, and John Round moves and Kathy Bellata seconds the motion stated under Article IX in the town administrator's handout. And I would just note that the motion corrects an error in the article. The reappropriation was originally approved in fiscal year '23, capital project approved in April of 2022, not an FY '24 project approved in April of 2023. And I'll recognize John Round for remarks.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Our library facilities must be updated to meet the needs of our community. At its regular meeting on April 16th, the select board agreed with a unanimous vote. Built in 1887, our library does not have adequate space to accommodate the various book clubs, meetups, story hours, and nearly 500 programs that it hosts annually. Further, the library currently has accessibility challenges, including that there is only one bathroom and it is not ADA compliant. Two years ago, the town appropriated $200,000 for bathroom renovations, but proposed plans required more square footage than the library could afford to lose, so the initiative was postponed. The Massachusetts Library Construction Program offers a matching grant program every five to seven years or so. This is one of those years. The first step of the program is a planning and design phase, which offers up to $100,000 in matching funds to communities that appropriate $150,000 towards planning and design. If accepted into the program, the funds would be used to engage an architectural firm to consider renovations and expansion possibilities to address our library's needs. Following the planning and design phase, the library then would also be eligible for matching funds for construction if approved at a future town meeting. The $150,000 in funding is a reappropriation of the $200,000 that previously had been voted to be spent on the bathroom renovations. If the library is not selected to advance in this process, the $150,000 will be retained by the town. This article is supported by the ADA Advisory Committee here in town and the library trustees. We recommend your approval of Article IX.
Thank you, John. Is there discussion? I don't see any hands. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of this motion, press one. Opposed, two. Abstaining, press three, and voting is open. 300 in favor, 19 opposed with one abstention. Article 10 pertains to opioid settlement funds. Brian Solace moves and Ann Harrison seconds to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,892 into a special revenue account created pursuant to Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023 for purposes of depositing all funds received by the town in connection with opioid litigation settlements, said funds to be expended without further appropriation for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents. Said amount having been received by the town and deposited into the general fund prior to the enactment of Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023. Remarks, Brian Solace.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is more of a bookkeeping exercise inasmuch as we have to take, to accept the money, we have to have a place to put it, and this is just establishing an account for that transfer.
Brian, that's perfect. Thank you. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstained, press three, and voting is open. Motion is approved, 284 to nine with six abstentions. Article 11 is the article that pertains to the regional school district assessment, and Annalyn Mitchell of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee moves, and Erica Spencer, also of the regional school committee, second motion number one in the school district handout. That's the other handout that you should have. And this vote is just a reconfirmation that we have to do annually under state law. Is there discussion? If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstained, press three. And that's approved, 257 to eight with 16 abstentions. And Annalyn Mitchell makes motion number two in the school handout, and Erica Spencer seconds, and remarks, Annalyn Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the school committee, our school community, and most importantly, the children we are responsible for educating. Over the past year, Manchester Essex Regional School District has continued to make progress in fulfilling its goals as outlined in the strategic initiative and district improvement plan. The school district's operational budget is managed each year to deliver stable growth in spending and town assessments. Balance- in spending and town assessments, balancing program needs, town funding constraints, and other cost increases due to inflation and/or cost of living increase. Tonight, we ask for your support on the recommended school district budget of $31.1 million for FY 2025, $31,130,522 to be exact, which supports the same program scope, services, and class size as we currently have. This $31.1 million budget reflects a spending increase of just 2.9% over the previous year, less than the district's five-year average of 3% growth, and less than the state average of 3.5%. To support the school district's operating budget of $31.1 million, Manchester's town assessment will be $16,339,528, stated in Article eleven, motion two. It is an increase of 1.84% from the previous year, which is still lower than the five-year average of 2.2%. Lastly, we are happy to share that according to the latest U.S. News and World Report on the best public high schools, our high school is ranked a number seventeen in Massachusetts, which puts us at top four-point-eight percent. Hold on, this is even better. And we are ranked number four-sixty-one nationwide, which puts us at top 2.6% of all public high schools in the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you, Annalyn. Is there discussion? Ready to vote? Oh, is there a hand back there? I don't see it. Yes, sir. I don't see a hand here.
Nathan Fanton, Ten University Lane. Is there a reason why the feasibility study is so incredibly expensive? Is this for special contractors?
Excuse me, excuse me. You're referring to the feasibility study under Article twelve. We'll talk about that when we get there.
I apologize.
That's okay. Other discussion on? Yes, Mr. Bodmer Turner.
Jeff Bodmer Turner, eighty-nine School Street. I might have just slipped a bit there, but I didn't hear the motion moved and seconded.
I stated that Annalyn Mitchell made the motion and Erica Spencer seconded it. Further discussion? Ready to vote? Yep. If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstaining, press three. The vote is two-hundred-and-seventy-one in favor, eighteen opposed with seven abstentions, and the motion is approved. Finally, Annalyn Mitchell makes motion number three in the school district handout, and Erica Spencer seconds. Is there discussion under motion number three? Ready to vote? In favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstaining, press three. And the motion's approved, two-hundred-and-sixty-one in favor, fourteen opposed, and eight abstentions. Article twelve pertains to a feasibility study for rebuilding or upgrading the Essex Memorial Elementary School, and John Benares of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee makes the motion under Article twelve in the school handout, and Chris Reed, also of the school committee, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. During the fall of 2022, the school district commissioned a capital assessment to analyze the critical needs of Essex Elementary School. The results were reported to the community and clearly showed that Essex Elementary had passed its useful life. Specifically, the study identified approximately nine million dollars in capital investments needed to maintain the aging facility. In January 2023, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, recommended and approved the Essex Elementary School for admission into the eligibility phase of the MSBA grant program. The MSBA grant program provides technical assistance and financial support for the planning and construction of a new or renovated school. I would also like to point out that this building also went through that same process and is currently in the project closeout stage. So by virtue of its acceptance into the grant program, Essex Elementary School has been identified as one of the most rundown schools in the state with respect to its current building systems, structural conditions, and overall aging quality. As a result, acceptance into the program comes at a critical time. Pursuant to MSBA requirements, the project will undergo a feasibility phase that must be completed within the designated timetable and framework. The feasibility phase is estimated to cost up to 1.5 million dollars, of which 30% will be reimbursed by MSBA. The feasibility phase will be funded by three sources, $500,000 from the school district reserve fund, and the remainder from the two towns in accordance with the capital allocation formula outlined in the regional agreement. Participation in the MSBA grant program will allow the school district to work with the MSBA team of experts during the feasibility phase to determine the most cost-effective and efficient solution for providing a renovated or new facility. A feasibility study is necessary because it is a requirement of the MSBA in order to qualify for state-funded reimbursement for any future building project, including renovation. It creates a transparent process that investigates potential options and provides multiple solutions for the towns to consider, including cost estimates and schematic designs for repair, renovation, or new construction. It also provides the school district, town officials, and voters the facts needed to make educated decisions about the future of the school and the students it serves. A school building committee was carefully selected and officially appointed earlier this evening by the school committee in accordance with the MSBA guidelines. The committee, made up of specific skill sets and representative groups, is ready to begin this important process, but first, we need your support, so please vote yes on Article twelve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benares. And I'll recognize Sarah Melich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After numerous conversations, the finance committee voted four-two to support this article, although most members had some concerns which hopefully will be addressed. First, we had asked the school district to delay applying to the state for a few years so the start of debt service payments for the Essex Elementary School would coincide with the payoff of the middle high school in 2034. But they nevertheless applied in 2023 and were accepted to commence the process with debt payments likely to begin in fiscal year twenty-eight or twenty-nine. The state does not allow a pause in the process, so they must continue or lose their slot and reapply. We are hoping they might be able to use bond anticipation notes for a few extra years of lower-interest-only payments to ease the transition. Second, given the substantial decline in enrollment and the challenge Essex has supporting the operational budget, we felt before applying and spending 1.5 million dollars on a feasibility study, they should have taken a look at the existing capacity of the middle high school and memorial school to determine the feasibility and impact merging the elementary schools would have on the operational budget. The school district has indicated that will be considered in the feasibility study. We recommend funding for this feasibility study and a capital cash exclusion, which will increase the tax rate for one year, fiscal twenty-five, about 2.2%. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So this is a majority vote at town meeting to approve the appropriation. And as Sarah mentioned, it will also be on the ballot as a capital exclusion under proposition two and a half, and that will also require a simple majority vote. Is there discussion?
First, I want to mention that I'm speaking as a private resident, as a personal opinion, not the opinion of the pound keeper. It will take a long time to get used to adding that to my resume. My name is Tom Keough. I'm at Twenty Lincoln Street. And I want to bring to people's attention information regarding Article twelve, and some of it that Sarah has just mentioned, and some other articles that we've talked about this evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Keough?
Yes.
I'd like to discuss Article twelve when we get there.
Thank you.
Oh, we are there?
Yes.
Sorry. That was a brain cramp.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
My apologies.
Article twelve asks for $660,000 for a feasibility study for Essex Elementary School. On page ten of the finance committee report, the finance committee mentions that in fiscal twenty-five, we are paying $2,720,907 for debt service for this new Manchester Memorial School and the Manchester Essex Regional High School. Sarah already mentioned about the payments for the regional middle high school being made only until 2023, 2033. The FINCOM already also says, quote, "We express that desire to the Manchester Essex Regional School District to time the commencement of the debt payments for a new or renovated Essex Elementary School in commencement," excuse me, "with 2034, when the middle high school debt is paid off." But they nevertheless paid, applied to the state for school building funds in 2023. If that building is deemed to be replaced, the new debt payments might start in fiscal twenty-eight, fiscal twenty-nine, or fiscal thirty, fiscal thirty. That could mean anywhere from three to five years of debt payments for three schools, probably adding another 1.7-plus million dollars a year, the school debt total for the town of Manchester. That means our total would be $4,400,000 for a single year. I did check today about the number of students that there are in Essex Elementary School and Manchester Memorial School, and there are about 76% of the students in Essex Elementary as there are here in Manchester Memorial. I would find it difficult to imagine that a new Essex Elementary School would cost less if it is built eight or 10 years after the new memorial school. I also want you to remember that the annual town meeting has already moved Article eight to the ballot in May with a possible total of 7.55 million. And if one takes time to look at the five-year capital plan on page twelve, thirteen, and fourteen in fiscal twenty-seven, there are two large items for the town meetings to consider: $21.4 million for highway facilities and $23 million for treatment plant equipment upgrades, REED, PFAS, filtering, and treatment. I'm not telling you how to vote. I'm hoping that this is a way to have you look at the big picture for indebtedness now and in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Further discussion?
Sarah Creighton, Thirty-seven Proctor Street. I did serve as the chair of the Manchester, on the school committee, and the chair of the high school building committee, and on the memorial school committee. And I just want to remind people who may not have been here at the time the district was formed, and I believe we're still the newest district in the state or among the newest. But when the district was formed 25 years ago or so, we promised each other, Manchester and Essex, that we would build schools as the need arose. And the first need was the high school and middle school. The second need was memorial school, and the third need is Essex Elementary School. I've been in that school with the school building committee, and it needs significant money. And to put money from operating into it to keep it safe and healthy is putting good money after bad. So I urge you to support the school committee's deep understanding of their own facilities and keep our promise to Essex. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton.
Hi, Lindsay Banks. I'm at Forty-Fourth Street. So we moved here during the memorial school building process, and throughout that process, as was just stated, it was really clear to me that it was always the plan to rebuild for the district all of the buildings in the district. And it was with this understanding that the town of Essex, at their town meeting, approved and funded this beautiful building that we are sitting in today. So if you've been in Essex Elementary or heard about the conditions there, it's in desperate need of a refresh or rebuild. It needs a new roof, new windows, the boiler's failing, there's standing water in the basement. Buildings don't wait for debt service to roll off, to fall apart. This feasibility study is about taking advantage of state grants and doing our due diligence to learn as much as we can in undertaking a school building, rebuilding, or renovation process. I would encourage everyone here to think about our district as a united community. Our children are in it together. Our success as a district in being one of the top districts in the country relies on our size, and our size relies on our partnership with the town of Essex. What Manchester wanted and got for some children in our district by moving through the MSBA process and getting this building approved at Essex's town meeting is now sorely needed by the rest of the children in our district. It's the right thing to do for our district, community, and for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Nathan Fanton, Ten University Lane. I do think that we should vote yes on this. What I ask, my question actually, is about the $1,500,000 total. It says that's the estimated. It looks like there's two entities that will be receiving that payment, which is the designer architect and then the OPM, which now I'm blanking on what that is. So it really sounds like the two entities are going to be getting a really, really sweet payout for this. And so what I would ask and think about is if we don't utilize all of that, so for instance, if the design architect and the OPM decide that they only need $900,000 to make this happen for this study, do we retain that money? Or is this something where we pay straight up $1,500,000? Either way, I think it's important that we do it, but I would like some clarity on what's happening in that piece of it.
Ms. Bowden? This is Pam Bowden, the superintendent of the regional school district.
Hi, that's a great question. And I think the concept of feasibility study elicits something in the mind, which is a quick study of potential sites and what you could build. The money actually lasts about two years. It does cover the initial cost of hiring an owner's project manager and then an architectural firm to do an initial assessment of whether or not. An initial assessment and several community presentations on options to go forward. Once the community starts to help us narrow down what those options are, and they'll include renovation, a total rebuild, it might take into consideration different sites than the one we're looking at now. Through the process of whittling it down, the feasibility study allocation actually brings you all the way to a final design presented to the community for a vote to move forward. So it's a two-year duration. They are sizable contracts for the OPM and the designer, but we arrived at the but we arrived at the estimate of up to 1.5 million, somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5, by using publicly sourced information from the MSBA. They have a wonderful site. You can look at all the comparables that we used to come up with the estimate. We also tapped into the experts that sit on our Memorial School Building Committee. These committees are made up of architects and engineers, people who are in construction, people in the construction trade, people who have actual firsthand experience. Believe me, the school is not leading the charge in terms of analyzing costs and making decisions. We really lean heavily on community experts to help drive and inform the process. So it is unfortunately the going rate. We were as shocked as you were. The feasibility study cost for this school was 650. But people have made clear to us that the escalation of cost inflation in the current market, that that's where we should plan, plan to be.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. And voting is open. And the motion is approved, 244 yes, 42 no, and three abstentions. And before we take up Article 13, I'm going to test the electronic voting system again. So with the tellers who are testing, please take their stations. Ready? Now, only the tellers, only the four tellers. Press your button now. One person, one extra person voted. That's pretty good. Article 13, excuse me. Ann Harrison moves, and John Round seconds, that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $248,348 for the purpose of funding the town's final share of the cost to refurbish the turf fields. That's Highland Field and Coach Field field. Remarks, Ann Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These are going to be kind of long remarks for a small article. But those of you who have practiced in town meeting attendance may have noticed that you've seen this one before. Following, by the end of 2022, the rugs and pads that are the bases of a turf field were long overdue for replacement. They were 12 and 14 years into a 10-year lifespan. The cost estimate for the total project was 1.6 million, which included PFAS testing of the materials that were going to be installed. Following the apportionment formula for the district agreement, Manchester pays approximately 2/3 of capital expenditures. In addition, Manchester pays half of the cost of major upgrades to the Coach Ed Field field, because our town teams use it heavily in the summer. The last annual town meeting voted to pay that $400,000 from fund balance and the Parks and Recreation Department revolving fund. Then the school district considered how to pay for the remaining $1.2 million, and the first thought was to pay for it from their reserves. But that would have drawn down their reserves significantly, and they were concerned about the possibility of overlapping emergencies, suggested that instead the district should borrow the funds. Both towns needed to approve the borrowing. Manchester's 2023 town meeting considered how to pay for the work, and the meeting agreed to support the district's borrowing up to $1.2 million for the two fields. Field and a half. Essex's town meeting did not support the borrowing, preferring to pay its share, approximately $400,000, from town reserve funds. That made the borrowing moot and set up a situation where the district would pay the contractor from its reserves, and the two towns would reimburse the district. In June of 2023, both towns had special town meetings to approve a reduced school district budget and other topics that arose. One of those topics was to allocate $400,000 of the savings from the reduced district budget to the Fields project. So so far, we've put in $800,000 and approved a borrowing that didn't happen. Now, in April of 2024, both projects are complete. The school district has paid the final bills. The total came to 1.427 million as opposed to 1.6. That includes both halves of Coach Ed Field field. At this point, yes, Manchester had authorized the borrowing of 1.2, which never happened. It's also paid 800,000 of its share in two installments. The remainder, based on the actual project cost, is $248,348, and that will be the end of the saga of the two turf fields. For another 10 years, anyway.
Having heard that, I'd like to know if anyone would like to move to reconsider Article 2, setting the Chair of the Select Board's salary at zero. Seriously, is there discussion? I don't see any hands up ready to vote. If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. And voting is open. And the motion prevails, 239 in favor, 17 opposed, and five abstentions. Article 14 is the report of the Community Preservation Committee. And Joan McDonald, the Vice Chair of the CPC, moves, and Brian Solacey seconds the motion as presented in the warrant with the following clarifications: Items 1, 4, 5, 10, 12, and 14 to be funded from FY 2025 Community Preservation Estimated Receipts for the purposes stated. And Items 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 13 to be funded from the FY 2024 Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance for the purposes stated. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish.
Must have gotten in all my steps today.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends Article 14 CPC projects. We did have several discussions regarding the $200,000 contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust, given the lack of new affordable units that have been completed since the trust was formed. In full disclosure, I am a trustee of the Affordable Housing Trust as the Finance Committee representative. The trust explained to the Finance Committee that it has been working with the Manchester Housing Authority for several years to increase the number of affordable units on their sites and find a path forward with developers to possibly add market rate units for adequate cash flow. No responses were received to two requests for proposals, even after a consultant was hired to develop a proof-of-concept plan. The trust is currently working with POAP to find a financially viable solution, which will be more attractive to a developer if the trust can make a contribution of 5% to 10% of the development costs. The trust fund has about $1.2 million, and the Finance Committee supports their plan to work towards a partnership with a developer to add multiple units rather than spending the entire trust fund on one unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any holds under Articles 14? Is there any dis...? Yes. Mr. Morse? You can just call out the number. Any other holds? Mr. Morse? You do.
The Affordable Housing Trust...
Did you give us your name and address?
Gar Morse, 11 Jersey Lane. The Affordable Housing Trust has, Mr. Moderator, over $1 million that has been residing with them for a number of years. We have not seen any performance from that group. I know they have good intentions and have the best interest of the town at heart. But for me, to add another $200,000 to their kitty with no evidence of performance is not acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Morse.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
I move that we amend this article to remove Number 10, the $200,000 to go, additional money's going to the Affordable Housing Trust.
And that motion, that amendment is seconded. Further discussion? Yes?
Alida Bryant, 57 Old Essex Road, Still. I am thinking, and I would like to be corrected if I'm wrong, that this kitty is necessary so that when opportunities arise, the trust can move fast without further town votes or fundraising to secure opportunities. Is that correct?
Well, I'll recognize Chris Olney, who's a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, to respond.
So I'm here because John Foyerbach, who is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, can't be with us this evening. So $1.2 million might buy a house in Manchester, maybe a duplex. It wouldn't cost pay for the renovation of it. And we're not capable of managing it either. We're just a group of volunteers. What we need the money for is to leverage public and private funding to undertake a big project. And the biggest project we can think of is the renovation, modernization, and expansion of the properties that are owned and managed by the Housing Authority. We've been working with them for a couple of years. It's going to take several more years, frankly, to get a project put together, to find a developer willing to take these small projects on. Because if you look across the whole state, we're small potatoes here. We're talking about maybe adding, if we're lucky, 50 units. Developers looking at hundreds of units they would like to do. So we have to be very creative in how we can put this package of properties together to attract a big developer. And that's why we need $1.5 million probably to make this happen. $200,000 this time. We've been contributing generously to the Housing Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust, $200,000 roughly per year for the past five years. This is just another installment to get us to where we need to be to be able to leverage a project that will create the affordable housing units that we need.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Is there further discussion? I don't see any hands up, so we'll vote first on Mr. Morse's amendment, which is... Yes? Which is to remove Item 10 from Article 14, effectively reducing the appropriation from $200,000 to zero. If you're in favor of that, press Amendment, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. And voting is open. And the vote is 45 in favor, 178 opposed, and 11 abstained. So the amendment does not prevail. If there's no further discussion, yes, sir.
Eduardo Vivanco, 23... I was going to give my mother-in-law's address. 14 College Point.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your name.
Eduardo Vivanco, V-I-V-N-C-O, 23 Ocean Street. After hearing the words of the Affordable Housing Representative and what we just heard about inflation in the market, clearly $200,000 is not going to make a cut for getting to 1.5, which is what they need this year. Probably next year, prices will go even higher. So I would like to propose an amend in which not only we don't go down to zero, but we raise it to $500,000.
Well, I'm sorry, that's out of order. Because we can approve or reduce the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, but we can't increase them under state law.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So further discussion? And we'll vote on the original motion. And if you're in favor, press yes. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. And voting is open. The motion's approved, 208 in favor, 21 against, with three abstentions. Article 15 is an exchange of easements. And Catherine Bellotta makes the motion stated under Article 15 in the Town Administrator's handout, and John Round seconds the motion. As I said earlier, under our general bylaw, no conveyance or acquisition of real property can be authorized by town meeting unless the Planning Board has made its report. The Planning Board held a public hearing, a public meeting, on April 18 and recommended approval of this exchange of easements. Remarks, Kathy Bellotta?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as is stated here, we're basically talking about an easement swap on the property of Newport Park. So there's a current town easement, which was built upon. So there's a building on it. And what we'd like to do is, this article would authorize the Select Board to acquire a new easement running under the existing driveway of the Newport Park complex to the back of the complex, where there is a trail entrance to Powderhouse Hill Trails. By doing so, by swapping, you know, getting a new easement and relieving the old one, we would be allowed to provide a few public parking spaces right at the trailhead to Powderhouse Hill, and that would provide better public access to the trails. And in fact, I think we just approved, in the prior article, the $20,000 estimated to construct those parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there discussion? Yes?
Beth Heisey, 49 Pleasant Street. I'm also a member of the Manchester Housing Authority. I just want to confirm that the Manchester Housing Authority has not approved any easements or anything at this point. I assume that this money, or the money that was raised, will, is to fund something to present to the Housing Authority? Because we did have an initial meeting with three of the five members of the Housing Authority in attendance. But we have never, the Housing Authority has never taken an official vote. We haven't seen an easement or any kind of plan. So I just want to make it completely clear that as of right now, the Housing that as of right now, the housing authority is-- it hasn't taken a position on this.
Thank you, Ms. Heisey. Do you want to respond, Ms. Bolaata? Mr. Fettishfield?
So yes, we need to finalize the language for the easement, and part of the funds that you approved to the CPC project would help do that. And then obviously, we would need to present that to the Housing Authority Board and get final approval. But we will be-- the town would assume the cost associated with the legal expertise that's needed to make it happen and look forward to working with the board and making those final decisions and putting things in place.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? This is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press 1; opposed, 2; abstain, 3. And voting is open. Motion's approved. 185 in favor, 28 against, with three abstentions. Article 16. Brian Solacey moves, and Ann Harrison seconds, that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to supplement the FY 24 legal expenses account to cover additional expenses incurred for various legal services. Remarks, Brian Solacey.
Yeah, this year's been expensive, to say the least. We're still litigating with-- for the SLV project as well as all the documents that-- as the planning board has gone through the rezoning. Everything has to be vetted by legal counsel, and those costs have started to creep beyond what we had originally planned for. So it's just simple. We've got to pay our bills.
Thank you, Brian. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, 1; opposed, 2; abstain, 3. Voting is open. Motion is approved. 181 to 4 with three abstentions. I see a few people beginning to drift out. I hope you'll stay with us because I think we're getting close to the end. We need a quorum to finish our business. John Round moves, and Ann Harrison seconds, that the town raise and appropriate $300 to be deposited into the town's Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, subject to set appropriation and being expended from the trust fund only for the purposes authorized by Section 20 of Chapter 32B of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is there discussion? Ready to vote? In favor, press 1; opposed, 2; abstain, press 3. And voting is open. Motion is approved. 184 to 4 with three abstentions. Article 18 is Authorization and Limitations on Revolving Funds. Ann Harrison moves, and Kathy Bolaata seconds the article as presented in the warrant. State law requires that we do this every year, authorize and set limitations on revolving funds. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1; opposed, 2; abstain, 3. And voting is open. I probably don't need to repeat that every time, do I? Motion is approved. 186 to 2 with six abstentions. Article 19. Our amendments to the town's general bylaw, and Ann Harrison moves, and Brian Solacey seconds, to amend Section 4, Subsections 5 and 6 of Article 1, General Provisions, parentheses, Enforcement Tobacco Products Regulations and Tobacco Use Regulations of the Town's General Bylaw by deleting the text as presented in the warrant. Is there any discussion? Okay, you know what to do. Voting is open. Motion is approved. 180 to 5, no, with seven abstentions. And Article 20 is a citizen's petition, and Donna First-- excuse me, Donna First moves, and Ann Harrison seconds the article as presented in the warrant. The Select Board now recommends approval. Remarks, Donna First.
First, I want to thank our moderator, Alan Wilson, who worked tirelessly on helping me understand Article 10, Section 23 of the general bylaw as it pertains to signage. Thank you for your kindness. I also want to thank our select chair--
You're welcome.
Too many emails, Ellen, I'm so sorry. And I want to thank our select chair, Ann Harrison, who also worked with me regarding understanding our bylaw and what was needed for me to bring this citizen's petition in the right way to town meeting. So thank you, Ms. Harrison. And to have the Select Board and the school committee's approval for my petition means the world, so I thank you all for your patience and your time working with me. So I know we've been here for a very long time, and I will be brief with my comments. My citizen's petition is about amending our current bylaw to allow our athletic director, Ms. Mullinary, from Manchester Essex Regional High School, to solicit advertising in the form of sponsorship banners to be approved by the school committee for the inside fence of Highland Field during the seasons of fall and spring only. The funds raised will hopefully offset rising athletic fees that families are being charged. Our family cap is being raised to $1,600 starting in the fall, and we have the third highest athletic fees in the region. And we're hoping to help with small capital projects like new bleachers and scoreboards, field maintenance, and hopefully, if we can raise enough funds potentially to help with a new turf field in the next nine to 10 years. We currently have a school policy regarding advertising at the high school, but we need to amend this town bylaw to allow the school to do so moving forward. And by having the support of our athletic director, who will take full responsibility of this effort, she will work with the school committee, the finance office, and facilities to manage the banners, we hope to make this successful fundraising campaign year in and year out. I feel like this is an opportunity to raise money to help the now 75% of our students who participate in athletics at the high school and help offset costs to the school which will benefit many other departments. I want to thank you again, Mr. Moderator, the Select Board, and my amazing school committee and chair and our superintendent for all your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Is there further discussion? Yes.
Alida Bryant, 57 Old Essex Road. And this is all new to me. And the fact that it has to do with advertising for the athletic programs is wonderful. But some of the language in here is-- the way I'm understanding it, it's telling me that I can't put political signs in my yard, that I can't put any signs in my yard unless they have specifically to do with the fact that I'm selling my house or that my name is on my house. So I'm-- I need some help here. I think I'm misunderstanding what I'm reading, but I'd like some help.
Well, I'm going to see if Town Council can help us with the first part of the question, which was political signs.
Or any signs that we choose on our own property.
This is Michelle Randazzo, Town Council.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So what's in the warrant right now represents a bylaw that is currently on the books. The only thing that is going to be added is a limited carve-out with respect to signage on the particular fields that-- you know, it's-- they're not spelled out by name, but that's what the intent is of these added language. So the part of the bylaw that you're talking about is already in existence. Some bylaws that you have on the books are old, and they would-- we generally would not enforce them in ways that might violate more current standards with respect to the First Amendment and otherwise.
Thank you, Ms. Randazzo. Answer your question.
Well, almost, yes. It does answer my question, and it raises another, which is we need to look at that bylaw.
Well, we may need to, but we can't tonight because doing that would be outside the scope of the warrant.
Absolutely.
Glad you agree. Further discussion? Ready to vote? In favor, press 1; opposed, 2; abstain, press 3. And voting is open. And the motion is approved. 163 with 25 opposed and seven abstentions. We're going to pass over 21. Yes. And Ann Harrison moves to pass over, take no action, under Article 21, and Sarah Melish seconds. The Finance Committee and the Select Board both recommend passing over. If you're in favor of passing over Article 21, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. And Ann Harrison moves to dissolve the annual town meeting, and John Round seconds the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare the annual town meeting dissolved. Thank you all for coming.